Yeah.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay. I call the city council meeting to order on Monday, July 21st, 14, at 7:00 PM. Oh, it's actually 7:06. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul's bringing me the persons to be heard. Oh, no, we actually, we're gonna do the introductions first. I'm Mayor Ann Hunt, this is council member Mark Vanderlinde, Arlene Donahue, Bob Christians, Tyler Avens, our systems, or our city engineer, Paula Hornby from WSB, our interim city administrator, Mike Veroni, our finance director, Brian Grimm, and our community director, our development director, David Abel, our city attorney, Ron Beatty, and our director of public safety, Paula Falls. We're going to move on to the agenda, and we have quite, we're gonna remove from the consent agenda M. That's gonna be brought back to us, that's the approving the scope of services with WSB for the Jennings-Cove's project. And we're going to add, under business items, 6D, which is awarding service for re-roofing Wellhouse #3 and Wellhouse #4. And 6E is a letter from the Shorewood, asking for the MCWD to videotape their meetings. So those will be added under the business agenda. Persons to be heard, I'm going to read exactly what persons to be heard is, so that we're all clear. The city and council invites residents to share new ideas or concerns related to city business. However, individual questions or remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker. No city council action will be taken, although the council may refer issues to staff for follow-up or consideration at a future meeting. The mayor may use discretion if speakers are repeating views already expressed or ask for a spokesperson for groups of individuals with similar views. Speakers should state their name and home address at the podium before speaking. So we have four people on the list. Mark Brandau, from 870 Red Oak Lane, start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I just wanted to have an opportunity to address the city council in togetherness, because I've lived at 870 Red Oak Lane for thirty-plus years. I haven't been involved with any of the discussions, 'cause I knew that Red Oak Golf Course was going to be developed according to the Met Council format and plans approved by the city council. I'm just worried that as their plans have changed, I'm gonna be looking out the front door of my house on the backyards of many homes that are built in there. Originally, the road alignment was to keep the old Red Oak Lane and stay with that Red Oak Lane name. And now, as times changed, I think they've changed the orientation, so I'll be having a lot of backyards in my face. I would pray that somehow the trees that are clear-cut, the, you know, replanting of the trees would be done in a way that gave us a buffer and screens for all the people that are, well, long-term residents, who are so used to the Red Oak name, that it seems it'd be a shame to clear-cut the golf course and level the trees. I spent twenty years on the planning board, preaching water conservation and tree preservation, and if it's clear-cut, it'll be very sad and affect me personally. So I just wanna state my piece before it goes to final plat. If you'd keep that in mind, when the Red Oak is under consideration, to please replant the trees that they take out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandau. And do you wanna get back to him on that, David?
Certainly, certainly can contact him.
That would be great. Michael Smart, from 890 Sunnyfield.
Madam Mayor, council members. I would like to thank you on the continued efforts to make the roads better, safer. The new surface and the new grading has been working out really well. And I would just want to see if I could have more of the same, because my drive to work has been so much lighter and not so it won't be.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that on to Public Works. Ron, I believe it's Groot, from Enchanted.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. I just wanted to continue to, uh...
Name it.
Uh, Ron Groot, 3850 Enchanted Lane. I just wanted to continue to be in front of the council, as you, I'm sure, are continuing to look for sources of financing and planning for the roads and coordinating neighborhoods on Enchanted Island. And so I will probably appear as frequently as I can. But I wanted to specifically say thank you for the work that was done since I was here last. I think the city of Shorewood got, corresponded with someone and said thank you too, 'cause I had over a hundred grateful households beyond me on the island. And particularly, Mr. Peters, the engineering department, and your Public Works were hard-working and did a really nice job. So, we have a temporary solution, we'll look for the permanent one, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And later in the agenda, we're gonna talk about FEMA dollars and how that all might work out.
Great, thank you.
Ralph Harrison?
Madam Mayor, council members. Ralph Harrison, 4935 Grandview. Something resonated with me a few weeks back in a meeting. Mark, you were talking about allegations versus, you know, citizens really have something legitimate, they should bring it up. And something's been kinda bothering me since then, and I just, I'm not an attorney, so I'm looking at the public record, trying to figure this out, and it looks to me, and I'm just asking this, just so you can clarify it for me, 'cause I'm looking at some public documents that bother me a little bit. Particularly one from the city of, or from Rick Hellway, who's the administrative hearing officer for Hampton County Court. And he's describing a situation where he rescinded a ticket for Mr. Tom Notch, by the way, who we're all pretty familiar with, I think. And, you know, he's explaining why this, he rescinded this ticket, which seemed to be valid, and he says this, which kinda bothered me. He says, "Court records show that I dismissed the above-capsized citation on July 29, 2010. Per sata that dismissal, I filed the following motion." And he states, talking about Mr. Notch, "has a letter from Minutrist, the city councilman, Mark Vanderlinde, who states that the city council approved mini-truck usage at a, at a January 1, 2010 city council meeting." So, 'cause Mr. Notch was driving around in the mini-truck, and it wasn't properly licensed, apparently. But what bothers me is that, it seems that, and he's, it seems that the, when I look at the record, it looks as though the city of Minutrist had never approved any such permit until almost a year later, in 2011, January. And in fact, I, I looked at Mr. Notch's permit, and it's started on 1/31/11, off, almost a year after this letter that you turned into the court, says that the city was allowing this. And so, what I'm asking, I guess, is there something I'm missing here? Or was a false document produced to deceive the courts on behalf of Mr. Notch? Do you recall that?
Do you have a copy of it?
I have a coffee, I have a copy of the memorandum from the court administrator, yes, I do. And there's a number of other documents as well, and I'm just asking if you recall that situation. Because, you know, there's, there's been, there's been issues about credibility and so on. And this, to me, seems kinda legitimate, and that's the only reason I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know, it was three years ago, I would have to...
It was four years ago.
Well, let me ask you this, let me ask you this. Is, I can understand, and you might not recall, but do you think that that would be an unethical thing to do, to falsify a document, to get, you know, a friend off of a ticket?
Yeah, definitely. And I did.
So, so in other words, you don't think that you actually wrote this letter or signed a letter to that extent?
No, I, I did.
You did sign the letter?
Well, yeah.
Well, so, why did you do that if you felt it was unethical?
I, I would have to see the letter.
Well, because I can tell you, I talked to a friend of mine who's a district attorney, and I said, "You know, this seems unethical to me." And he said, "Yeah, it is, it's a gross misdemeanor." You know, 365 days in jail and a $3,000 fine, max. But don't worry, the statute of limitations is up. But all I'm, all I'm asking, Mark, is why would you perpetrate a fraud like this?
I don't think I perpetrated a fraud.
Well, then, explain to me why you would sign a letter that you knew was false.
I don't think I did, like I say.
Well, like I say, I'm not making an allegation, but this is, anybody can look at this.
But I need a copy of the letter.
Well, I'll give you a copy, I made copies of all the stuff for you that I think. There's more documents that I haven't gotten to yet, but I do have a number of documents that highlight this whole thing. And it just, you know, I hate to be a pain in the butt on this, but this, to me, seems like a pretty egregious, a pretty egregious act, you know, when we're talking about...
I would have to see it, because I, I don't remember completely. I know we were talking about it, we're discussing it, and I, and I...
Well, there was a year lag time here before, you know...
Well, it took a year to get...
Well, that's right, and that's why I'm concerned, because I'm looking at this letter that says that, you know, 2010, the city administrat, the city administration at a council meeting said that, you know, the city is going to, is made these legal, and it didn't happen for at least a year, almost a year after that.
Yeah, I don't think, like I say, I would have to see a copy of the letter, to exactly know what I said.
But this was, this isn't something you would condone, or the council would condone, I assume, Mayor Hunt?
He's already answered that, Ralph.
What, what do you think?
But if you'd like us to do some more research on it, I wasn't on the council in 2010, I'm sure Paul Falls would be happy. I know that there was a lot of misinformation around the mini-truck ordinance.
There was, and I understand that. That's not what concerns me. I guess what concerns me is that Mr. Notch had been warned once before on this, so he knew full well. There's plenty of documentation, documentation of that effect. What concerns me is that we have a city council member that would actually compose a fallacious...
Ralph, I don't think you're telling the entire story.
Unless you could come up with a letter, this is exactly what I'm talking about.
I don't have the letter, he should have sent the letter, there's a copy of it.
You need to come up with a letter, Ralph. This is exactly what I'm talking about. You come here with unfounded allegations...
Wait a minute, will you, why don't you read that, then?
You're, you're, this is...
This, I didn't make this up.
Ralph, Ralph.
You're saying that I wrote a letter saying that...
No, I'm asking you, Mark, I'm asking you.
I don't remember, I had, I know I wrote a letter, I want exactly the content of it, I didn't keep it.
Gee, that's...
I'm sure Ms. Chief Falls, can you look into this for us?
No, I'm asking you if you wrote the letter.
I did write a letter, but if you could come up with the letter, then I can go through it and explain to you what it says, 'cause you're not even...
I explained to you, I showed you what the court said, and I'm not gonna do what the public record said.
You know, there's, there's no point, you don't even have the actual letter, Ralph. So, Paul, you do a little research on this, bring it back. Most of us weren't even on the council, and don't know what he's referring to. I do know, there was a lot of misinformation regarding that mini-truck ordinance, and that there were tickets that were issued that were not viable, because they were not under state statute. And so, if you go back and you look at all the meetings...
I have to look at it here, and that's why I'm asking the question, 'cause it seems like somebody wrote a letter that was untrue.
Well, please provide the letter.
You don't have the letter, you're saying...
You're right, I don't have the letter, all we have is what the city administrator consents, and that public record.
Okay. I think that we finished this. Paul, please look into it and get back to us. Okay, next is special presentations. Now, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Storms is not here, he was going to be my second introduction, so I will proceed with the first one. And I would like to have Michael Wolken come up to the podium. Michael began as a community service officer on June 30th in the police department. And there were thirty-three applications for that position, that he was able to beat them out to replace Steve Gale, who I believe is in the room, I thought I saw him a little earlier. He replaced Steve Gale, who retired back in January. Mr. Wolken was a CSO for the city of Mound for a period of nine years before joining us. He also has about a dozen years of experience as a correctional officer for the state of Minnesota at the Lionel Lakes Correctional Facility. He's a graduate of St. Cloud Cathedral High School, has an associate's degree in sales and business administration from the St. Cloud Business College in St. Cloud, and we're glad to have Mr. Wolken here and have him be our CSO.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact of getting back in law enforcement, I, I'm looking forward to getting back into that, since I've been kind of in a hiatus for the last year with Mound, so I'm really happy that you guys accepted me over here. So, thank you.
Mike, I'm very, very happy to see you join us here.
That's just 'cause you don't have to see me on the crosswalk anymore.
Every morning at 7:30, so welcome.
Thank you.
So I think what we'll do is we'll have, must've been a miscommunication on my part, but we'll have Mr. Storms here on our next August 4th meeting, and we'll introduce him at that time.
Great. Okay, next is the consent agenda, any questions?
Before that, um, there's just a teeny error in one of the June meetings. I'm not sure if we correct that and then consent it, or how it works. But, um, it's under the surveying resident input, it just says, by unanimous consent, we appointed Avens, Vanderlinde, Veroni, and Grimm to it. It should be, huh? So...
Yeah, and then also Mayor Weibel's name was misspelled.
Just small things, I don't really know if we need to...
Did we pull them out and...
No, I think we can administratively change those.
You can approve them with corrections as stated.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, any other items on the consent agenda that we wanna pull out or discuss?
Besides M, correct?
Besides M, which has already been pulled.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with out item M.
I second it. And with the corrections?
And with the corrections. And with the corrections.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's five-oh. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll start with our business items. Approving bids and awarding project for County Road 151, County Road 19, public improvement project.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, we did open bids on July 15th for the water main extension, trunk water main extension along County Road 151 and County Road 19. And this is, in part, to serve the new Red Oak development. The engineer's estimate for the project was $512,660. Bids did come in higher than that. The lowest bid was $580,411.51. The second bidder was $633,889.81. We did have, we only had the two bidders. We are attributing that more to the bidding atmosphere right now. With the way the weather has been, we are seeing contracts come in higher. We're also seeing fewer contractors bidding on them, I think, because everyone's lost about two months of the construction season. We did relay that information on to the developer, that's Land Source Development, and they did provide concurrence to award the bid. I should note that the, since the bids did come in higher, there is a increase in the cost to the city as well as the contractor, the sit, the oversizing cost will be somewhat higher. However, in the trunk area, charges zero, recoup that money back. Staff does recommend approving the resolution, accepting the bids, and awarding contract to the low bidder, GM Contracting, for the base bid in the amount of $580,411.51. I should note, I did talk to the contractor, and he was, is looking to have a crew in here the middle of August, if the project is awarded.
And how long do you think it'll take?
And they will complete that upon, with the completion date that we have stated in the contract.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
My only question with this is, um, is there any, with the big water project that we're talking about, is there any overlap that this would have with that?
No, this is, um...
So this needs to be done separately?
Yeah, this is an independent distribution line, so it doesn't account for, as a raw water line or well. So it's something you're going to need for distribution anyway.
Make a motion, accept the bids and award a contract through GM Contracting for the base bid for the amount of $580,411.51.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's five-oh. Okay, the next one is approving the preliminary development agreement with Madamy Homes to allow grading Phase 2 in Woodland Cove.
Madam Mayor, and council members. This is the second Madamy project, third overall phase of this development. I had been preparing a complete development agreement, similar to the one the council approved a year ago for the first phase, when, over the last week or so, it turned out that Madamy was really interested in being able to get in early and grade. So in effect, this agreement that you see is sort of a mini-development agreement. I pulled the, the grading pieces out of the agreement. All of these things would have been in the normal development agreement anyway, letter of credit requirement and so forth. We pulled those out, made that a separate standing agreement, which only deals with the grading, and again, made them give us a letter of credit for the grading. Doesn't give them any other approvals. So if you approve this tonight, they can go in and grade early. And what we expect is, probably at the second meeting in August, in other words, four weeks from tonight, we'll have that final development agreement for you to look at, which will be the same document essentially that you approved last Labor Day for the first phase.
And the only thing I'll add to that, Madam Mayor and council, is we have received that full plan set from the developers. So we have the final plat application. Engineering has actually done their full review of the final plat application. There are some other things that we're working on to make sure that that subject agreement is complete, so that's why it will be in about four weeks from now. So we do have the full plan set to review that it is consistent with the overall master development plan.
Okay. Council?
I'll motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the preliminary development agreement with Madamy Partnership.
I'll say it, Matt.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's five-oh. Okay, number C is the pre-sale report for 2014 A Bonds refinancing refundings of 2005 A and 2007 A bond issues.
Madam Mayor and council, I'll, I'll start out and briefly give the background, and then I'll turn this over, turn it over to Rebecca Kurtz with Ellers, who is with us tonight. The reason for bringing this before the council is this, some, you know, the, our pre-sale report, so it's getting authorization to start the process to, to refund, basically. Our 2005 A was a water bond issue, and 2007 A was the Maple Crest Street project. So those two, you know, issues that were done back in that timeframe, the interest rates were a little higher at the time, so as Ellers, they will, you know, send reports or do analysis for us as far as if it makes sense to look at refinancing. And we, usually if it's, we can save three to six percent, you know, or somewhere in there, or even above six percent, obviously, you'd, you'd look at it. And right now, they're estimating it to be around like five percent, or about $70,000. And the remaining, you know, principal interest payments left on the, the two separate bond issues. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Rebecca to go through in a little further detail the, the report that's attached in your packet.
Thank you, good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of the council, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers and Associates. And as Mr. Grimm explained, what we have for your consideration this evening is issuing $1,245,000 in general obligation refunding bonds, refunding both the 2005 A water bonds and then improvement bonds from 2007. Under current market conditions, we are anticipating a savings of about $70,000 or about 5.2% when you combine those two issues. They would continue to be paid from the water revenues as currently being paid, and then also from assessments. So the payment sources would not change. The term is a thirteen-year term, again, not changing from the original bond, so we would look at them maturing in 2027. With that, as part of the process, as you've done in the past, we would recommend having the bonds rated. You currently have an AA+ with standard and pores, so we would recommend going through that process and having the bonds rated. Again, with this, it's fairly straightforward, I'm looking just purely at the interest savings and no significant changes in the structure of either one of those issues. We are proposing a sale date of August 18th. However, I just would like to let you know that we have seen some movement in the bond market. So to the extent that rates remain stable or decrease, we would wanna stick with our schedule on August 18th. However, in the next month or so, we're gonna continue to monitor the market, and if we do see them starting to climb up, work with staff and possibly be back at the council to delay the sale until it's a time when we could see the interest savings that would meet your goals.
Can you have some authorization, that if it starts to climb, that you can lock it in? Or you can't do that?
I think we've done that in the past, Madam Mayor and council, as far as like, almost like a committee or a pricing committee, I think we've, we've done something to that effect, if that's something that the, the council...
So, could we, what do we do, authorize a finance committee for the bonds?
Yeah, I think in the past, we've had like a three-person, like the administrator, the mayor, and the finance director to, to be able to, to, to take care of that, you know, to not wait to...
Yeah, 'cause I do think interest rates are gonna climb this fall, so, yeah. I'd rather, if, if we're gonna do it, and we can get in at a low rate, I don't want us to have to wait to have a meeting, if we can get in.
Um, I guess with the timeline and the process to go through the rating call and get the documents out, so that we can market it to the underwriters, at this point, I would propose maybe sticking with that August 18th date. And as we continue to watch the market, if we do see a change, we could come back and find a time and a pricing committee and the, the direction to move forward under those circumstances. But it would definitely be something that we'll keep in touch with staff and monitor the market to...
'Cause we could look at doing that. We could look at doing that at the August 4th meeting, if it seems like things are starting to creep up, where we could maybe do it a week earlier or something.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So for your consideration this evening is, if you have any changes or adjustments to the proposed structure and the issues, and if you would like, taking action, if you'd like to move forward with, starting the refunding process for those issues.
Any questions, council?
Yeah. Is there, is there a cost in refinancing this, is there a closing cost of some type?
Um, there is, and, um...
And the amount?
I believe this was in your packet, but I will, if it's not...
Yeah, it is.
Let me find the correct page.
I think it's on 173.
173?
There should be a detail of the fees for that. What we are proposing for the total cost, and I don't see a breakdown, but I can get that for you, but we are looking at an underwriter discount, or the fee the underwriter can take at a maximum of 1% or $12,450. And then the total cost of issuance, we are estimating at $39,500. That's a combination of Ellers fees, the bond council fee, a rating fee with standard and pores, and then there's some small fees that are associated with the county and other documents that need to be retained to produce the official statement.
And that, that net savings, that's estimated, that's net of...
Yes, the net savings of $70,000 is after all fees, so that is pure, pure savings. Fees have been taken out prior to that number.
Otherwise, I guess I'll go back to the, there's no other questions. The recommended option would be to approve the resolution that's attached and approving the pre-sale report for the general obligation refunding bonds, 2014 A, related to refunding the 2005 A and 2007 issues.
So moved.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But I did have a question, because they had made a recommendation on refinancing the EDA bonds in the report, that it was a savings of about $400,000. It was in the report.
Four hundred forty-four.
Yeah, it was. Do, do you have that, can you address that?
Um, as part of our normal process of reviewing potential refundings, we, we do look at all of the debt outstanding for the community, and there could be the possibility of refunding the EDA bonds. Along with that, though, if you did choose to move forward with that at some time, it would be refunding them into a general obligation bond, so we would need to go through a CIP process, draft a capital improvement plan that relates to that project, and then hold a public hearing. There is a reverse referendum period. And, um, that would be needed to be completed before you could move forward.
And how long does that usually take?
Um, the reverse referendum period is a thirty day waiting period. Add roughly, we'll say, a month or so to get through, um, the process to draft that, call for the sale and move forward. So maybe sixty, sixty to ninety days in the long run.
And just so the public understands what a reverse referendum is.
Um, you would hold a public hearing, um, post and hold a public hearing. And then there are thirty days for the public to petition to bring that to, um, back to the council. And if they are successful in that petition effort, then it is required to go to, um, a referendum to move forward with the process.
Okay. And so, do you have any idea what that process would cost? I mean, if it's gonna, I mean, it still sounds to me like it's worth doing. I mean, I know that EDA bonds are at a higher rate. So if we can, you know, reissue them as general obligation bonds and save four hundred thousand, I think we should do it. But I don't understand all the costs entailed. So I'd like to have a clear understanding of that.
Um, I, off the top of my head, I guess I can't give you specific dollar amounts, but I can get back to you on that. There would be a fee for, um, Ellers and legal working with you to draft the capital improvement plan. And then there would be the regular costs associated with refunding the bonds. So, um, the cost of issuance, including Ellers fee, bond attorney, rating, um, and then the smaller miscellaneous fees. But I can, I can get a breakdown of those costs to you.
That would be great. Could we, we do that at our August fourth meeting, just so that we kind of stay in this window.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Everybody agree?
Yep, makes sense.
All right, so that was, uh, bonds. Oh, we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I thought there was.
Yeah, we voted.
It was five oh.
She asked a question after.
I, I wanted to bring up the four hundred thousand. We didn't talk about that. Okay. Next item is, um, approving the claims.
Nope. D and E, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. We added those. Okay, D is awarding service for re-roofing wellhouses number three and wellhouse number four. Who is going to do that? Is that you, Paul?
Sure.
Paul's looking at me and I'm looking at Paul, since this was added today, but, uh, Paul, go ahead.
Uh, Public Works, um, did have the roof looked at for wellhouses number three and four. They are in, uh, they're very much in need of replacement. Uh, so they did go out and get quotes. They got quotes from three contractors. Uh, actually, the quotes, as you see in your handout, were very, very close. Uh, the low bid was Biffert Roofing and Siding. And STACK recommends, uh, we approve an agreement with Biffert Roofing and Siding for re-roofing services for wellhouses number three and four. And that little quote amount was nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
Does, does this come out of the water fund or? This will be out of the water system fund, out of the water system. Yeah, the water fund, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, looking for motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Biffert Roofing and Siding Incorporated for re-roofing services for wellhouse number three and four and for the amount of nine thousand dollars.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain from voting because two of the three owners of the businesses I know personally.
Okay, so it's four and then one abstention. Okay, and then, uh, the next item is six E. And Scott Zerby sent me a letter from Shorewood, he's the mayor of Shorewood, sent me a letter, uh, today and it requested that I present it to the council tonight. So I'm just gonna read it and then we can discuss it. He has written a letter to the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. And the city of Shorewood is requesting that the MCWD Board of Managers consider the future video broadcasting of the board's regular monthly meetings. We've had a number of requests from constituents coupled with a desire by our council to have this type of record available to residents served by the district. We, along with other communities in our area, are facing ever greater concern about issues affecting surface water management, invasive species and district governance. In this day and age, we feel government agencies like the MCWD that have a significant impact on residential and economic activities should take every opportunity to be as transparent as their operations as practically possible. Many of our member cities provide this information source to their residents and the services of the Lake Minnetonka Cable Commission are available and are very reasonably priced. We ask that this request be placed on an upcoming board agenda. The city of Shorewood would fully support such an initiative, both in philosophy and through our financial support of the district. Sincerely, Mayor Scott Zerby. And he asked if that, if we would send a similar letter. So, we can talk about that? I think it's a good idea.
I agree.
Yeah, there's, um, the MCWD is, uh, when you go to their meetings, you don't have an opportunity to really contribute. They don't ask, it's not like LMCD where, where we're part of the board. They have their own board, so you're basically an observer when you go to those meetings. And I do think there, there is an advantage for our residents to be able to see those meetings. Because we have quite a few projects going on in our city. And this way they would know ahead of time sort of what's coming down the pipe. Um, so, uh, if we'd like to do that, we should do our stuff.
I, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, s- should we vote on it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, Counsel? You need, uh. Do you need a motion and second? To send a similar letter and support the issue. I need a motion to send a similar letter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was five oh. Okay, so that was five E. Now we're to approving claims. Questions? I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the claims as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's five oh. Okay, and now council reports. It was a very busy month. First, I would like to thank Don and Pat Turk for lending us their convertible for the, uh, parade. It was very fun. Paul led us and then, uh, I got to drive behind Paul. And then Mark, uh, borrowed John Strandell's car, uh, which was a very cool convertible. So we, uh, supported our neighbor Mound at their Spirit of Lakes. And I want to thank both of them for lending us their cars and hopefully we got them back without a scratch. The next thing I, uh, wanted to talk about was, um, LMCD is Wednesday night and also the Nemo. I'm going out on the Nemo boat Wednesday night from Excelsior. Did anybody else sign up for that? So Mark, you're going. Is anybody else going? Okay, that, it's a water quality, uh, tour of the lake and talk about different water quality projects, including AIS. So we will be there Wednesday. We did not have a, had a Northwest League meeting. We did have a police advisory meeting with St. Bonnie and that went very well. And, um, they're going to approach the police reserve about putting a, uh, pot machine in the, um, St. Bonnie City Hall so that the bikers can come in and get water from the, um, the pot machine. So, uh, and then we talked about, uh, just our relationship, uh, as far as the police. And they're very happy, um, with the services that are provided. Do you not agree?
Oh, I absolutely agree. They're very happy.
So that's, um, and then, oh, the next, um, we talked about Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and sending that letter. And then there's, uh, one other item I wanted to mention, um, which I think, actually, I'll wait on that. So Mark, do you have anything?
We had touched on this a little bit, um, it has to do with Pioneer Sarah Creek. Bowser is kind of looking at our third gen, third gen pro plan. And they're not overly enthused with it at this point. And I know there's, um, looks like there's gonna be some changes coming. And I think it's something that, that we need to talk about. One possibility is contacting Minnehaha Creek Watershed to see if they would be interested in taking the rest of Minatrista, just a small piece that's in Pioneer. And we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. I did have a conversation with Mr. Hurdle from Bowser. And he was quite clear that there had to be a lot of changes. One of them is financial. And like I say, we, we've, I think it's something that we need to discuss at a meeting. I don't know if we want to approach Minnehaha to see if they're open to that.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, 'cause if they say no, then we have to go a different route anyway.
Right, at least we'd know that upfront.
Right.
Not saying that Pioneer is, is out of the question. I'm just saying we need to figure out all our options at this point. Uh, I don't want to wait till the last minute and then find out that, um, that we've got a problem here. So I don't know if, uh.
Coincidentally, um, under staff reports, I was going to propose the idea that, uh, we start our next special meeting at five o'clock. And the reason for that is to allow for time to have James Whisker from MCWD here. Not specifically to talk about what you had mentioned, there was another topic to talk about. But, um, I will certainly, if it's the direction of the council, uh, bring this to his attention as well. And maybe there might be others from MCWD that could come with to have that discussion.
That would be great. Don't you think? Is everybody in agreement? Do you want us to go?
If, if you want to start at five o'clock, um, yes, we do need direction from you to set that special meeting time at five o'clock. And the, and the reason, I guess since I'm talking about it, the reason for that is I think next special meeting, we're gonna start budget discussions. So this will be before the budget discussion.
Okay.
We're talking about August fourth.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to start the special, uh, meeting time at five o'clock on August fourth, two thousand twelve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's five oh. Okay, and, uh. Okay, Arlene, you're next. I have nothing. Five.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank the council and the mayor for the participation of the Spirit of the Lakes. Tremendous success. My family has been involved in the Spirit of the Lakes as a major sponsor and has participated in the parades and planning of the Spirit of the Lakes now for at least the last ten years. And I can honestly say that this last Spirit of the Lakes, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, had to be the biggest event ever that I've ever seen in my ten years. The parade was successful, lined up on both sides of the streets, elbow room only in the park. So at least six times, uh, was the city of Minatrista, or we were thanked for our participation. So again, thank everybody for a great job. It was a very successful event.
I agree.
And it was another step in building our relationships with Mound. So, okay.
Okay, Tyler?
I don't have anything.
Okay, staff, who's doing the rental housing ordinance?
I can, uh, Madam Mayor and members of council and, um, certainly chime in, anyone, uh, who else had, was, uh, dealt with this. What has been brought to city staff's attention is a potential, um, rental, um, housing situation where, uh, a house is going to be rented, not, um, on a yearly basis, but it's being advertised as being rented on a, more of a weekly basis for like a vacation type, um, housing. Um, and there was a lot of concern from the neighbors of that property about that, wondering if there was anything in our ordinance that prohibited that. I said no, because we do not have a rental housing ordinance, uh, in the city of Minatrista. So, um, anyone can rent out any property they, they choose for any length of time that they choose. The city does not require a special permit or a license for that. And so there was some, uh, concern with that and, um, sounded as if, uh, I don't know if any of the council members or the mayor was, was specifically contacted about that, but it sounded like they were going to reach out and maybe have that discussion. And, uh, so that is, uh, in conversations with the mayor, why, uh, we had it on the agenda for this evening for discussion from the council as to whether, um, would like to look at being more restrictive with that regard? Or is, is it fine as is, uh, given our, our current situation?
One of the questions I still have on this, uh, even if we had a rental housing program, can we legally prohibit the time frame? So that somebody could only rent for a week? Or do, can you say it has to be a month? I didn't think you could do that legally.
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure. I, this issue came up at a recent staff meeting. David reported exactly what he said. I have not looked into it. I'm not surprised that we don't have an ordinance. I think even if you could craft one, it's extremely difficult to enforce an ordinance like that.
Because this seems more of a type of a bed and breakfast kind of thing.
Yeah.
This is like an Airbnb thing?
Yeah, verbo. Yeah.
I think this, I don't know this to be a fact, but I think this probably goes on a lot here. We just don't know about it.
Well, I think it does and I, I, I know four or five homes that do it. But even if we had a rental program, I don't think legally we can prohibit people from renting their houses. We can permit them, we can license them. But my understanding is that they can, they still have the property right to rent their home. Unless they agree to it in a homeowners association document.
Yeah, and I guess I would say generally you're right. In other words, you can't prohibit the people next door from renting their house. What's involved here is a little different because it gets to be, uh, a shade of a commercial activity. You know, the people next door move out and they rent their house and they have long-term tenants. It really doesn't have much impact from that perspective as opposed to what we're talking about here. So I think that's a little bit different, but I've just, I've never researched the issue.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, members of council, what you're saying is absolutely correct. You can't prohibit someone from renting. What you can do is provide for more restriction and regulation, more government regulation with, uh, an ordinance. So not to say that you can't now rent a house in Minatrista. If you're going to rent, however, here are the rules. You have to get a license. It has to be inspected annually. You, you, you know, there, there's different rules that you can set forth to make it harder likely for someone to do something like that.
Oh, what do you guys think? Am I the only one who got any calls about this?
Yes.
You have?
Could be.
I, uh, I think it's pretty hard if somebody owns a property wants to rent it out. I, I don't know. It might be a little difficult to try to police it to, uh, put an ordinance of some type on it, uh.
I mean, other ordinances ob- obviously apply if they're creating undue noise or, you know.
Yeah.
Great.
That kind of thing, but I, I, I thought we should talk about it because it seems to be a growing issue. But maybe it's not. Maybe it's just poor people. Okay. Well, do you want Ron to do any research on it or wait and see if there's an issue? How do we want to do this?
I've, maybe you can answer this. The, the, uh, city of Minneapolis, uh, there's a lot of rental properties that go in and out. For some reason, if they're rented out frequently, I think there's some kind of an ordinance where the inspector goes in and inspects the property to make sure it's safe and brought up and, and, I guess, safe, whatever. Are you familiar with anything like that?
In, in general, you're right. I mean, there, you, you can wade into this issue as much as you want. I think the question really here is, is this a solution in search of a problem?
Yeah, I, I don't think you want.
That's my question, because I'm, I seem to be the only one who got a call. And, and you're not getting calls to these properties, are you?
No, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I'm aware of several properties in the city that do that and we have not had any issues related to the, the rental of the property whatsoever, so.
Okay, so.
I'm not familiar either, but I know in other areas, for example, a tenant may be in there for a month, a short time for whatever reason. And then when they leave, it's not the same condition it was when they started. In other words, maybe the fire alarms are missing and the smoke detectors are, you know, just, uh, things like that. That's why the inspection is, but we're not talking about Minatrista here. We're talking about other parts of the city.
Yeah, to my knowledge, uh, the properties that I'm aware of are, are very nice properties.
Yeah, I don't think we'd have an issue.
Okay, then I don't thi- then I don't think we need to do anything at this point until there is a problem. But just to put it on your radar. Yeah. Okay, uh, next council staff open for, oh, I should let you do that. Okay, next council staff open for, oh, I should let you do that.
Well, I'm glad you introduced it. Yeah, mayor and council, we had a chance back in May for differing reasons, but we had a chance in May to have council member Van der Lindy and Mayor Hunt speak with our city staff kinda informally here in the council chambers on a Wednesday morning. I didn't know what to call it, I just came up with open forum, so. At the time, I think we talked about having future meetings like this with different council members being the two. We don't wanna have three, otherwise we gotta notice the meeting. It's just a, it wa- it was very successful. I mean, it, it, as I mentioned, it started for different reasons, but it ended up being very successful. So, I know the council has an interest in, in doing more of this after hearing about the results of this. So, I'm proposing Wednesday, August sixth, at nine AM. I think at the time we had that first meeting, we thought about maybe every other month, but I'm gonna propose quarterly. That might work out best for us. Since it's been roughly three months now till, till that early August meeting, so I don't know if, which two of the council, I assume two of the remaining three that haven't been participating. So.
Well, August sixth, what the?
I believe that's a Wednesday.
At nine AM?
Nine AM. And we can send you a reminder.
Yeah, that, that should be.
And we'll notice it to our, our staff, so they know to come, and because we had kinda short notice at the last time, but we actually had really good turnout and it was pretty good conversation. It's a chance to hear, for the council to hear directly from city staff, while waiting for meetings like this to happen to, to hear about things that are going on and vice versa, flow it the other way, so. Ask questions, so. So, Donahue and Christians are gonna be the next people, so I will publicize this to our staff and we'll see about getting our employees there on, on August sixth. And then we can look at something, I believe, maybe in November, hopefully after the election, but in November nonetheless, so. Kinda look at it those, those middle months of the quarter, so.
And we did number three?
We did. And the Gillespie property update, I believe that's Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Burney. Madam Mayor, whoops, Madam Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, the Gillespie property is, we discussed demolition on that property. And I, I guess it started with looking into possibly moving the building, which is not a viable option. And so, I've had conversations with Fire Chief Greg Peterson from Mountain Fire, and they have essentially a live burn evaluation process, and that typically takes between thirty and forty-five days. He's coming to the end of that, and it looks like that's gonna be a viable option for that property. With that said, the fire department has used it recently, I think in the last two weeks or so, for some very minor training. And then we are also scheduled to use that in about two weeks or so, mid, middle of August for a, a police training, kind of a building search type scenario based training. It's not too often that we get properties with multiple buildings. So, it's a, I guess it's an excellent opportunity for us to use that before the fire department were to go ahead and burn it down. As part of that process, there is, there's been talk about hazardous materials survey or inspection. And I, I think we've discussed this at past meetings. That is something that the fire department would, would request that the city do. It's my understanding that that has to be done, whether it's demoed and hauled away or whether they burn it down. But before, the fire department would be allowed to do a live burn there, that would have, that evaluation has to take place. And then if those hazardous materials are present, they have to be removed.
Didn't we already do this?
Well, we told them to look into it, I think.
Right, I think it was discussed, if I remember correctly, and there was no decision to move forward with it. It was just discussed.
Talk about the asbestos report? No, we did not do that.
There was none had done at that point in time.
It was, it was discussed, but not done.
Yeah.
It has not been done.
So, in order to move forward with this, we will have to have that done, and that would be the city's responsibility, or the owner, which is the city in this case.
Right.
I should.
You'll need the asbestos report, and there's a couple of people that we work with that will do it for seven hundred fifty dollars.
Okay.
The asbestos report.
So, do you put a?
So, I guess my question is, I'm not familiar with how that happens. Who, who takes care of making that happen, that piece of it, anyway?
We can discuss this at our staff meeting tomorrow. We'll figure out how to get it done, and I think.
If you want, I can give you some names or something.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take 'em. I know Mr. Van der Lindy expressed the same. He knows vendors as well, so if you guys wanna forward that to me, we'll talk about it tomorrow and, and we'll make contact with those vendors. We'll bring something back. I don't know if August fourth is still gonna be okay? Bring it back at the August fourth meeting for approval from the council?
Sure, that would be just fine.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we keep on timeline with this.
Yeah, because you'll have to put it out for, for a bit.
A bit.
Yeah.
The other issue is notification of the residents, surrounding residents, if we choose and we go with the burn. I think it's, would save us tremendous amount of money overall, but yes, there's still cost to hold in a way that, that it re-inashes with the burn, but it'd be considerably less expensive.
And that notification of the neighbors would be, is a part of this evaluation process, so they'll, they'll be included upfront, so they'll know. If there's a lot of opposition, they likely wouldn't do it. It doesn't sound like that's gonna be the case, but as well as notification on the day when that occurs.
And, and they, excuse me, they will burn it completely to the ground, right?
Yes, yeah. They'll likely start out with small fires and do their training and then step it up, take a staged approach. And if, they will eventually burn it all the way down. And there's multiple structures. It looks like most, if not all of those, would be candidates for a burn with maybe the exception of the guest house. But I expect an evaluation report back from Chief Peterson sometime later this week or early next week. So, I'll certainly keep you posted as that information comes forward.
And I would just add, I guess if the, our two council members who are familiar with this could also then forward excavating contractors that would be able to remove the remaining material. So, that is lined up as well, please?
Yeah, on the, if I recall, I have to go back in the file, but I believe even with the burn, I, I'm gonna have to let you know on the asbestos issue, cause there's a hazard, a separate hazardous waste site for the asbestos, for the removal of that. So, that, that I'm gonna have to give you a different, that may have to be removed prior to the burn.
It, it does.
It does.
It does.
Hazardous waste site, so.
Yes.
I will let you know, first of all, I'll give you the, the testers.
Okay.
There's two that we work with, one's right in Chaska, which you're familiar with, Nova. And then, then we'll have to make arrangements to have the asbestos removed, and then, then the burn can take place.
Yeah, they, they can go to the same landfill, but they can't, you can't burn it.
You can't burn it, you can't put it together.
Demcon and shock, if you will, take both of them, but you have to remove asbestos, take it down there, then burn it, and then take the ash down there. They go in the same line pit. But you can't, yeah, you can't leave it in there, so.
All right, Madam Mayor, last, and members of the council, last point on this issue is the timeline. We're looking at, the fire department has asked that we hopefully be able to push the live burn off into September, just because of summertime heat. It just makes it a lot easier for them to be able to train if it's a little bit cooler. And I think that fits well with the timeline, given the, the steps we have to take here. So, and then I'll also coordinate very closely and make sure that from the date that the burn occurs, that we can get that material out of there as quickly as possible, just to reduce any liability with kind of an open area there, so.
Okay, is there a timeline where we have to have the fishing dock in?
I'm gonna defer to David on this one.
It's in the, no, the fi- it wasn't the fishing dock, we had to get a sign up.
Okay.
And it was, I'll have to reference the agreement again, but my memory serves me correctly, it was in the first year.
Okay.
So, we're, we're okay. I mean, we told them upfront that, that this year it would be demoed and, and final graded.
Okay.
And that was it. So, that's what we're, we're still tracking for that.
And we contacted the watershed about doing more native plantings that don't like.
I brought it to their attention, and you know, they're, it's kind of the standard. We're, we're interested in looking at different opportunities. So, we'd have to get more specific about what we're looking for there.
Especially if we might be able to use that site for some stormwater management in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I think you're next, Bob.
Yep, next item is FEMA update. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, as you're probably aware, to date, eight Minnesota counties have been declared an emergency. That process is ongoing. I think those eight were the painfully obvious ones, where there wasn't, the evaluation process went very quickly because it was obvi- it was very apparent they, they were well over the threshold. And so, to date, I've had two meetings with FEMA officials and trying to collectively get Hennepin County listed as one of those in the emergency declaration. I, it looks like the totals for the county are well exceeding what the threshold will be. The holdup is kind of that FEMA officials are coming out and they're actually doing site inspections, and so they're building a case. It's taking quite a bit longer, but they're pretty confident that that declaration will happen, but it hasn't to date. But I think it will, and our city, like many cities, has a lot of ongoing damages that just can't be assessed yet. For example, the island, until the waters recede and we can peel all of the gravel and, and other material that's been placed on the road to assess the full extent of the damage underneath, we won't be able to close that issue out. So, this is gonna likely be going on for weeks or even months, depending how long it takes to, for the water to recede and get those materials off there. But we're, we are documenting all of that as we go, and certainly once that declaration is made, we'll, we're already in the queue, we're in line for that. And then we'll move forward and keep documenting and get everything submitted. And as you probably remember from last year, that process from start to finish generally can take up to almost a year. But we'll certainly continue to push forward with that.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Because County Road forty-four is obviously the county's responsibility, are they putting in for FEMA dollars because that part of the road that is completely eroded into the lake, would that be, you know, eligible for those kind of funds and the mud, where the mudslides were to retain that bank? Can they use, what they need to do there to, would that be part of the FEMA dollars?
It, yes. The, the, the quick answer is yes, but that is a, a claim that would fall into the county, so in other words, we aren't using that as part of our claim.
Right, but could you check and make sure that it's included?
Yes.
So that they'll get it done? And also maybe a guardrail on forty-four now that there's, I mean, if somebody slides across that this winter, they're gonna go right in the lake.
Right, some, a lot of the tree cover that separated the road from the lake is now gone.
Is gone.
Right.
As a result of that. And so, just so I'm clear, are you, I think you're asking if the FEMA dollars for that area will be earmarked to, for repairs in that area?
Right.
Okay, I can check on that.
Yeah, and, and if you can possibly ask them to put a guardrail, because now it's, it's more of a dangerous area. I mean, it was always kind of a dangerous area because you have snow blowing across it and you'd get ice there. But now when somebody slides, there's nothing that's gonna stop them from going into the lake.
Right, and we've had that preliminary conversation with them, and I'll just make sure that that continues to go up the chain, and hopefully they can address that.
Okay, that would be great.
And that's all I have on the FEMA update for now.
Okay, who's doing stormwater drainage?
That is Mr. Hornby.
Mayor and council members, there is a map at the very end of your packet. There is a list of items that I wanted to bring to your attention. These are probably the ten most prominent drainage issues we've had to deal with, a public works and engineering standpoint. If we were to look at items four, seven, eight, and ten on the map, those are very similar to the Hoffman drainage issue, where you've got water from a larger area coming through a single property at a low point. And it has a couple of items that have occurred, is a mass amount of erosion, flooding of property. I think there's one structure, item eight, where there actually was water that came into a structure on that incident. So, we did, with Public Works and Engineering, we've met with residents, and we've visited the sites. And one thing we'd ask or recommend the council do when we start looking at the budget is maybe look at putting together some dollars to study these areas to try to give some of these areas some relief and some repairs. Item nine on there is Enchanted Lane, and as Mr. Falls identified, is that, that's going through the FEMA process. We're also talking to staff. We're also talking with Shorewood about maybe doing something in a collaborative nature to take care of both cities' issues. Now, one thing that I should point out on, with the FEMA dollars, is that they will pay for restoration, but not improvement. So, the next, you know, we'll have to go through, restore the roadway once we, the lake goes down. It's not gonna be in good shape if you're hoping that it is in good shape. But then the next step would be to consider if we want to do something on a more permanent basis and look at a, you know, floodplain impacts to raise the roadway, impacts to homes that are adjacent to that and see if we want to pursue a method to rectify that in the future.
I think we do, but was that gonna come back with our pavement management plan?
Uh, we could incorporate that in, yes. I think it's gonna, I guess it will come back in, either as itself under the FEMA issues or it'll come back under the pavement management.
You're saying it actually has to go towards improvement? They're not just gonna fund an improvement amount, and then we can put that amount towards?
Yeah, I'll need to get clarification on that, but they generally do, they will fund the restoration project.
It has to go towards restoration. It can't just be that amount towards.
That's why I'll clarify that.
It, it's my understanding that those FEMA dollars, they'll simply reimburse you for the amount of the damage. And then if you choose to repair it, that's fine, or you can choose to use that money to go for
Do something else.
An upgrade, if you will, but they'll only pay for the reimbursement amount.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
And the reason that this is on here just for discussion tonight is to, I know this has been discussed before, but what we're trying to do here is, as Paul discusses in his report, is, you know, we're getting to the point where we're gonna start talking about a number of things related to budgets. Roads are gonna be one item, obviously. We even have survey data that says we sure have a lot of roads we'd like to fix that we did in two thousand eleven. So, we've heard that before as well. One of the things we just wanted to be able to, to give to you is that, you know, what we're seeing in the last, I don't know, six, eight months, we've had Mrs. Hoffman here, we've had Mr. Hosmer here, and those are two of the ten that you see on this, I guess the, the Letterman Top Ten List of Drainage Issues for Minatrista. But we're just trying to, to get this in front of you, because I think one of the things that we need to do and think about as we work on our budget for twenty fifteen and beyond is to try to figure out dollars, how, how we get them and what we do with them for these kind of projects. Cause as you heard from Mrs. Hoffman, you know, it's been years and years since nothing's been done. And we're sort of hearing that same thing, maybe not quite as long of a timeline, but we're sort of hearing that same thing from Mr. Hosmer. You know, give them credit, they came, you know, they're the squeaky wheel. They're gonna get a little greasier potentially, but, you know, there's eight more on there, and I know we have others as well. So, one of the things we're gonna need to do is so we don't have, is to try to, you know, make this a better community, is try to address some of these issues. So, we're gonna put these out there, and we'll see what kind of appetite people have for funding some of this stuff down the road. But, you know, these issues just aren't gonna go away on their own. We're gonna have to deal with them.
I did have a question on Seven and Marywood Lane. Is that a city property, or is that, it's the overflow structure washout, or is that Met Council?
No, that one is, that is a outflow for a wetland and pond area with the development. What's happened is a, there appear, there appear to be some flow coming off of Highway seven that went over that structure. I suspect that maybe the compaction around that structure wasn't that great, but it did wash out around it. I believe that's already been repaired.
Oh, okay.
I think Public Works already took care of that one.
Okay.
Some of these items, the ones that I did not mention, Public Works was trying to address those, some of the washout, the gravel washouts and so forth. But some of these other ones, ones I did mention, such as the hard scrabble circle, that one, there's large volume of water that can come down through a driveway across, one resident had to sand, probably, say, sandbagged their home to prevent it from being flooded. They actually used large bags of mulch, which worked very, very well, and quit thinking on their part.
Yeah.
The Trillium Bay, there's a, there's a significant amount of sediment that's been washed down toward the bay from a stormwater outfall. That needs to be addressed. We would like to look at that one and, and also look for the watershed district for some grand dollars to take a look at some of these, you know.
Okay. Was there some drainage on Kings Point Road, going twenty-six mile creek, I heard, some silt?
There was a incident where there was a storm pipe that was blocked, so they could work on it, so they could work on the pond. And somebody forgot to remove the plug from the outlet, and it went over the top and created quite, quite a erosion issue.
Okay, I heard about it.
And that's been cleaned back up now.
Terrific, okay.
Where is the problem on Game Farm Road?
That one is one that Gary gave me. They may have already addressed that. I think that was a, I think that was a gravel washout. I think that was a, um, I think that was a gravel washout is what that one was. There was a, there was an area where a large volume of water was coming down across the road and washing out the gravel and washing down a, a gully down the edge of the road. And I believe he has, uh, taken measures to, to, he's temporarily bringing that material back up and fill it in.
Is that the same area where the, um, our truck went over, our plow truck?
No.
That I can't answer.
No, this is, what this is referring to is, as you go, if you're heading north on Game Farm Road, just before County Road twenty-six, as you go down the hill, there's the hill.
Yeah.
That goes down where they, they recently built a big horse barn up there. Um, water comes down and it's essentially our, our horse trail, um, that gets, um, it, uh, Gary took video of it. I don't know if he shared with others, but, I mean, you could literally ride an inner tube, um, down it. It was so much force and so wide and so big that it completely, um, washes that whole trail completely out. Um, and they, they even on a, a small rainfall have to deal with that. So you can imagine with the large, heavy rainfall, what they had to deal with. Essentially that whole hill, everything gets washed all the way down to the bottom across the road, uh, in that area. And I don't, yeah, I don't know where exactly they're at with that, but ongoing issue.
Yeah, I know where it is now, yeah. Okay. All right, so reminder of upcoming meetings, is that you, Mike?
Um, yeah, but before I do that, Mayor, you know, um, Mr. Grimm reminded me that, uh, we dealt with the water treatment stuff at the workshop, but on camera we have not. So I thought I'd take about thirty seconds just to tell residents, if you are a city water user, you will be receiving a, um, mailing from the city, um, hopefully in your mailbox on Tuesday, tomorrow, which is the twenty-second of July. Um, in that you'll have a covered letter and then along with that, you'll have some information that is both on the advantages and disadvantages of the four options that are currently under consideration by the city council for water treatment and some financial information to go with each one of those four options. And then a postcard so that it's postage paid, that gives you the opportunity to let the council know what you think is the best option. And for those folks that are watching this that are not residents, that are on city, uh, city water, we will have on our city website a link for you to click on and send us an email with, uh, your concerns about the water treatment, um, as well. So that should be up yet tonight or early tomorrow morning, the, the twenty-second. Uh, both deadlines for either as a city water user or a non-user are, is Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, to give feedback to the city back, so. And then we will take that information, compile it, and present it to our council on the August fourth meeting. So that's a quick summary for those that weren't here for the, for the workshop.
Can I add one just other thing since we were talking about guardrails on forty-four? Where the plow truck went off, can we look into getting a guardrail there too? I don't know what the process is for that.
Sure, I'd be happy to talk to Public Works about the possibility of that. That's, uh, the intersection of West Branch and North Branch, uh, specifically along the north side of West Branch. But I can check with them, maybe engineering as well.
It's West Branch and Sunnyfield.
Or, I'm sorry, yes, you're correct. Thank you.
Yeah, but that, that looks pretty dangerous too, right there.
Okay. Yeah, I think Mr. Abel is saying that those are our roads and if we want to do it, we can, but we'd have to pay for it, so. But we'll look into it.
Well, how much is a guardrail?
We'll find out.
Well, that's what we can bring back to you. But it's, I mean, that's not a county road. It's our, our road.
No, 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 I need that, but I mean, how much it's a guardrail?
We'll investigate it, so we'll find out what it is.
I know that the road committee had mentioned it a couple of times too, that it was a particularly bad area.
Uh, and then just a reminder, our next meeting, um, we're going to have, I, I guess actually three of them. One at five o'clock, um, another at five thirty, and that will be relegated to the budget. And then our regular meeting at seven PM on, on, on Monday, August fourth.
Great. Any additions? Any motions?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, this meeting is adjourned.